Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for January the 7th. All of our council is present. The first item on the agenda for this meeting is to review the items on the agenda for tonight's council meeting. So, council, please refer to that document. Currently, there is nothing off of the consent agenda. The first several items are liquor license applications and purchase contracts. Item five is various resolutions. Ms. Mickelson, I think you told me that you've already received a blue card on one of, is it the Agenda Item 5E?
5E, correct.
Okay. So, that will be coming off the consent agenda. That's the hotel development adjacent to the ballpark.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank staff again. I say this every time, but on the irrigation water delivery districts, I appreciate staff working with neighborhoods because I know it's time-consuming, but it helps them, again, with their infrastructure and makes them able to deliver water effectively and hopefully conservatively. So, again, I thank all for staff for doing that and making it happen and then we approve those IWDDs. So, thanks.
Thank you. In our study session on Thursday, we had a great presentation or a great discussion also about the CAFER, the city's comprehensive annual financial report. Again, express our appreciation to everyone in the city who has been so frugal with our money. We spent less than last year and made more income than last year. So, appreciate the very responsible way that the city's managing its finances. Council, any other questions? Or, yes, Jeremy?
I've got a couple of things. On the CAFER, I just want to echo John's comments to Erwin or her team. I know that you guys do a stellar job in putting that together, and you do it in a timely fashion. And every time I've came to you, you're one of the most, you always at your fingertips have access to any data that I request. So, I truly appreciate that. And on items, I'd like to request that Item 5E and 5D both be taken off of consent.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? B and D?
E and D.
E and D, okay. So, E, we're anticipating is coming off because there's a blue card, and we're also taking Item 5D off, which is the Chicanos-Porla Casa development on Country Club and Main, correct?
Yeah, I want to confirm on 5D, that's actually a nonprofit entity that we're selling that land to, correct?
I'm sorry, 5D.
Yes, 5D.
Okay. Chicanos-Porla Casa, yeah, Jeff, please come up and give us a summary of this Agenda item, please.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker.
The entity that we are selling, would be selling the land to if approved by council, is the for-profit arm of a nonprofit entity. So, Chicanos-Porla Casa has a for-profit development arm that does projects like this, and then the profits from that development are fed into their nonprofit entity to support their services. So, it's not a for-profit entity for the sake of just for-profits, a for-profit entity to support and fund the nonprofit entity. That makes sense. So, the, who we are selling it to is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Chicanos-Porla Casa, who is a nonprofit entity.
Sorry, Jeff, I'm still confused.
Well, if I can, we can ask Maria to come up and actually explain it better than me.
Sure.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Maria Spolari. I'm the general counsel and executive vice president at Chicanos-Porla Casa, and I don't know if I can do a better job than what Jeff just did. He did an excellent job. Chicanos-Porla Casa does own and control the entity that the property is being sold to.
The nonprofit arm of CPLC controls the nonprofit, the profitable arm of CPLC that we're...
So, the only difference is that we pay taxes for the entity that's buying the property, but any proceeds, any income, all get fed to Chicanos-Porla Casa, which is a nonprofit. They only exist to help support the nonprofit.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Freeman.
So, Jeff, you know, we've had many conversations about this, but, you know, I'm excited about selling this property because you're taking, what, four or five different parcels and bundling together?
Councilmember Freeman, sixteen.
How many?
Sixteen individual parcels.
So, really, the net value of our parcel is based on the whole cell of everything coming together?
Correct. We own about 1.3 acres of the total 2.5-acre site.
So, tying up, I think Chicanos-Porla Casa for doing their portion and then the purchase of the Bailey Brake property, I'm sure there's the, some of the Lenhart property and other parcels, the easements and everything, and tying that all together, because that's where the value is, is putting it all together. Because if we were to sell our property individually, it would be worth not a whole lot of money.
If we were to sell our property individually, it would, it would, it would have less development potential than we have as a combined 2.3 acres or 2.5 acres. Even the city's property at 1.3 acres isn't 1.3 contiguous acres. It's 0.7 acres along Pepper Place and 0.6 acres along Main Street. So, even, even together or individually, we couldn't sell ours and create the same development potential we have today. So, it would be significantly less valuable land if they were sold individually as City of Mesa property by themselves.
And I think that's important to know, as the residents in our community, by putting it all together and having Chicanos come in and put together a great development, then that's, you know, a landmark in our city and entrance to our downtown area and our light rail. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. We've been working very closely with your city staff, and they've been excellent to work with. And I'd just also like to point out that our vice president of development, Nick Smith, and our director of development, Evelyn Guevaro, are here today as well. And thank you very much, Jim, as well, for your help with this.
Thank you.
I have one last question. What is the independent appraisal value of our two pieces of land without this deal? Because I didn't, I had asked Blaze to follow up with you, but I wasn't clear on that answer.
Actually, I'm going to switch spots with you.
Sure.
I'm going to bring up this exhibit real quickly. This shows, forgive me for the, it's a little dated because it still shows Redstone Investment and Randy Bailey as owners, where those properties that are Redstone Investment or Randy Bailey are currently owned by this development, this development entity. The reason I bring this up is it helps give you the relationship. The land along Pepper Place, lots 1 through 4, that are city-owned, those were valued at $400,000 when it was looked at as a combined development site. Those lots, 11, 12, 14, 15, and 16, along Main Street, those were valued at $300,000. We did not do an appraisal where we just took those parcels and said, I'm sorry, those, that is, we did an appraisal as one development site, which was $2 million for 2.5 acres. The City of Mesa parcels' contribution to that was $400,000 along Pepper and $300,000 along Main Street.
So, again, start again. The appraisal was done for the entire...
Entire 2.5, 4 acres.
And then we portioned out, we assigned out the values.
Yes.
But you're saying the appraisal is not accurate because you did it as one...
If we were to appraise lots 1 through 4 by themselves and not as, as part of the entire 2.5 acres, they would have a different value.
Diminished value significantly.
Because they, they don't have the same development potential. The 0.7 acres along Pepper Place doesn't have the same development potential as 2.5 acres on a hard corner with light rail. So, they would have less value at that point.
But we don't know what that less-value number is.
Correct.
Okay.
Jeff, were there any encumbrances or anything on the property that we had to overcome?
So, I'll start with Main Street, and I'm going to try and, Mayor, council, please forgive me because I'm going to go into planner speak, and that's not his job, but I'm going to start getting into Form-based code, so if I start to, I see eyes gloss over, I'll quickly move off of that. But the Form-based code has certain development requirements, and one of those is called the "build-to" line versus a setback. You have a line that you have to build your building to. If you look at this exhibit and you look along Main Street, if, that yellow line along Main Street is actually the property line, and if you had to build to that property line as the code says, you would have a really funny-shaped building. So, what ends up having to happen is to get a standard building that has, you know, straight sides, you have to pick the edge that is the furthest north, and that becomes your, your standard of bearing, and then you draw a straight line across, and that becomes your "build-to" line. So, we had to essentially create an artificial property line at this point right here, and that goes straight across, which means this area, some of this area, and some of this area became essentially non-developable land. You couldn't get building area where normally you would have the benefit of that land. So, it ends up becoming additional hardscape sidewalk and landscaping that they have to install in order to create the development.
Jeff, if you want to mention, there's a bus stop right there.
And there's also a bus stop that they have to move and maintain as well. Along Country Club, we did a widening project many years ago, and we used up pretty much all of the right-of-way that was available. So, now when you go on Country Club, I think you have a four-foot sidewalk, maybe, maybe a five-foot sidewalk. Our standard developments under the Form-based code is to have a pedestrian-scale sidewalk, so eight to 10 feet. So, what that means is they've actually had to move four feet within their developable lot in order to come, to create enough sidewalk space to have a pedestrian-friendly sidewalk on that side. So, we lost a little bit of land along Country Club as well. And then on, on this corner up here where you see the number one, that lot, that lot is part of this, this proposal and would be part of the land sale if it's approved. However, on the very west side of that, it's hard to see through the shading, there is a shared access drive that, that supports the Palm Court Retail Center to the west. That shared access drive was installed in the early 2000s as part of what was going to be the larger development that happened here as part of the Bailey's Brakes-Lenhart's deal that didn't happen. That retail center counts on that driveway access. And so, through this development agreement, we have essentially told CPLC that they have to maintain that driveway, even though there is no legal or contractual obligation on the part of the city to maintain that. It's more of a good neighbor policy with the Palm Court development, so we've told them that they've had to maintain that. So, essentially, Lot 1, they lose half of the, the development potential of Lot 1. So, there's a number of obvious encumbrances on the land that have resulted in some diminution in value.
So, Mr. Whitaker, does that answer your questions, or would you like to still have this off of the consent agenda?
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing that I would like to see is an appraisal on the individual parcels before we enter into the agreement so that we know we're getting a fair price. You know, we've said that we've appraised this as one piece, so therefore, we're using a ratio to determine what we think our portion is, which is $700,000, but we're selling it to CPLC for $400,000, under the guise that this is a significantly reduced appraisal if these were appraised individually. So, you know, the only thing that I would suggest is that we do an appraisal on the individual parcels to make sure we're getting fair valuation for the asset that the city owns. But clearly, that's up to council if we want to push this offer, if we want to go forward with another appraisal.
All right. I'm not hearing much. Yeah, so I guess we can have that discussion now, and I'm not seeing anyone say that they feel that way. I guess the question is, do you want it on or off the consent agenda?
Yeah, if we're not getting it reappraised, I would like to request it to be off the consent agenda.
Okay, great. 5D will be off the consent agenda. Mr. Thompson.
Chris, do we know when, when the city acquired that property and how much we paid for that property then?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, I had the pleasure of doing the research and figuring out the, the original Bailey's Brakes-Lenhart's deal from 2001 was the, the deal date. I believe we started acquiring property, that property in the late 1990s, so somewhere on '98, '99. I can't remember off the top of my head how much we paid for it, but it was, some of the land we already, we paid for and we had already transferred to, to Lenhart's as part of the deal, and some of the land we ended up maintaining ownership for. I can't remember off the top of my head how much we actually paid for, but I believe it was, was potentially a million dollars in that range, somewhere around there. And then we were going to give that land to Lenhart's at no cost, and we were going to waive all of our permit and impact fees, and, and I think we were going to get a trade for some, we were going to take the Lenhart's building, that was going to become our, we were going to own that after they built their new building. So, in either case, when I, when I do the, when I do the comparison, deal to deal, this doesn't play into your consideration, however, but we aren't waiving impact fees, we aren't waiving permit fees. So, the one-time permit and impact fees that the city is going, they're estimated right now at $860,000, where in 2001, we weren't going to get anything. So, even with, you know, the land value, reduced land value, plus our permit and impact fees, we're actually probably making more money on this land deal than we would have in 2001 through our original deal for the Bailey site. Not that that actually is your consideration, but I thought it was interesting when I was reviewing it.
So, Mayor and council, I think this is a project, and I think the hotel project or, their project on this same agenda are very similar, where we do the best we can to get the best values for the city, but that's not our perspective, right? We're the City of Mesa. We look at the big picture. And the big picture the council gave us was to find market-rate housing and bring that to, close to downtown Mesa. Remember, when we had this discussion years ago, when we were talking about this, we were struggling with all the Lytech applications that were coming to the city, and we were looking for the opportunity to bring in a market-rate development, as well as kind of trying to get rid of the shadows of the past on this corner. And frankly, it's been very patient, and we appreciated the steadfastness of CPLC sticking with us, because they've had to go through a lot of gyrations to figure out how to assemble all this property with the different property owners, how to get financing for this product at this location. So, the, part of this is, we've tried to be as fair, as reasonable as stewards of the public land, but we're also trying to achieve greater purpose, which is to bring a development here of market-rate residential on this corner. And so, we used our best judgment. We think actually the value will be much higher based on the method we use, because you look at the properties combined. Some of those parcels are interior and have no access, so their values would be very smally diminished. We've been working on this, I think, with council for four years, three years?
We released the RFP in late 2016. We selected CPLC to be our partner in early 2017, so...
And I think we briefed council several times. I don't think most of this information is new, so...
I'm sorry, Jeff, a moment ago, you said what the impact fees and permit fees would be on this.
Mayor, approximately $860,000 based off of the estimates we can do based off the size of the building. I also, in the, in the council report, there is a section on the economic benefit analysis. Because there was a point where we thought this was going to be a government property lease excise tax project, state statute requires the city to commission an economic benefit analysis from an independent third party. So, we did that, and we had, we, we normally don't have that where it's just a straight purchase deal, but because we had to, we have that available. And that economic benefit analysis showed that the city will receive direct revenues of approximately $5 million over the course of the first 25 years, and that comes from the secondary property tax, as well as the, the rental sales tax on the units themselves. The city will also receive indirect and direct benefits from the businesses that are in the, in the building and the jobs that are created, the revenue and employment that's created there of just under $207 million over the course of 25 years, in addition to the, the one-time permit and impact fees. I also did a little bit of research today to, to look at construction sales tax. We'll also receive a, a construction sales tax estimate of somewhere around $370,000 as well.
Mayor, is there any utility revenue that's, that you built into those economic benefits?
Mayor, Councilmember, I had, the, the $4.9 million over the course of 25 years, that would include the revenues from, actually, no, that is actually only revenues from our sales tax, rental tax, and, and the secondary property tax. So, no, we did not take into account the utility revenues as well. So, we'll be creating 198 new residential customers, as well as a number of new commercial customers if this project is, is developed.
When?
When this project is developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions?
I have no issue leaving 5D on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. 5D will be on. Let's move on to our next Agenda item then. Council, any other questions on the Agenda for tonight?
Mayor, just to be clear, on Item 7E, that's new, where we have, it's continued till March 18th.
Okay, thank you.
From the last time we had a discussion. Just so you noticed it there.
Right, I know that we, so, so it's being continued to a date certain, which is March 18th, and that's being done on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I have questions on 5E before we go to upper chambers as well.
Sure.
How's it going, Bill?
Good. That's right. Mayor.
I just want to follow up on some of the emails that we've exchanged previously. The appraisal value on that 5E property, what's that amount?
The appraisal on the 12,000 square feet is $360,000.
And the sale price with the developer is what amount?
The sales price is $300,000, and that was negotiated due to the restrictions on parking, due to the restrictions on game day access as well, and they also will provide for parking on stadium events as well. And this is a little unique, because if this, any other hotel developer were to try to do this, they would not have this access to the same amount of parking. So, it would be just a sale of a 12,000-square-foot lot versus working with the adjacent property owner and his 0.2 acres to the north and 0.55 acres to the east, it actually becomes a buildable lot for the hotel.
The appraisal, though, already devalues the property to $360,000 number, given that there isn't parking spaces, correct? So, that, you can't double-devalue the property from $360,000 to $300,000.
You know, I'll defer to Kim on some of this, but the $360,000 is basically the standalone 12,000 square feet if it were to develop by itself.
But you're correct. It assumes it doesn't have onsite parking, but it also doesn't recognize, I think, the game day limit, you know, 20 days or games or whatever, so...
That's correct.
And again, this property is restricted. It can't be used by itself. The value, the property couldn't be used for drive-through. There's a restriction by the covenants we have with, or the agreement we have, the Cubs. And yet, it leverages, by itself, it couldn't be a hotel, but with this developer, it becomes a hotel, and the estimated bed tax that would be received is?
Estimated bed tax is $193,000 yearly.
Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Thompson.
Chris, the same question on this one. What did we, what did we pay for that land originally?
That's, nobody's, that's like, some of this property was, there's a golf course, and I think some of it came from, beds, a grant we got from, like, beds for parkland or open space. But we sold, we sold, just so put in context, we sold, now, correct me if I'm wrong on this one, we sold to Bob...
Yes.
The original, with the build, the hotel and the retail space. What was the...
I believe that was $9 a square...
$9 a square foot. Because now there's a hotel there with what he's, and the improvements he's done, now the value's gone up to...
$25 a square foot.
So, he's, you know, in effect, he's created the increased values. And so, we've agreed, so that's why we work both ways, because recognizing, again, a hotel at this location is the best option, we believe, the highest and best use, and it, it can work with the adjacent uses of spring training. We already know it because we do it with the Sheridan today, and it's the same owner. And it's kind of, it's what we imagined in this area, as an entertainment area. So, it fits well, again, by itself, the 12,000 square feet. It's difficult to imagine what that could be by itself on this corner, so... And we've tried. I mean, the Cubs have tried. This property's been available for development since before we started building the stadium. Cubs couldn't do it. Bob tried to do it for a year and a half, so until now, for the last five, six years, this property has not been developed.
I think the part of this that I have an issue with is that we're getting ready to break ground on a 1.35 million-square-foot Class A commercial within, what, 100 yards of this property, which will significantly increase the value over the years. So, my objection is, A, why are we selling right now when this other property is about to break ground and increase the value? And B, it's already been appraised at 360 without the parking, so to discount that another 16 or 17 percent, this is worth...
So, the property for the union is appraised at 14?
You got parking lot at 18 and the big field at 9.
So, this, this is a better deal than we're selling it to the union for?
Substantially.
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
So, there are actually two appraisals that are available on the union, and the union deal is not done. The parking lot, the paved parking area actually came in at $18 a square foot. The big, what we're now known as the soccer fields, came in $9 a square foot, and you're selling this parcel, this 12,000-square-foot parcel at 25.
So, why the discrepancy between that and the appraisal value?
It's the same appraiser. I think it's, it comes back to the, that's a big parcel with a lot of utility conflicts. This is a development site ready to go.
For a hotel.
For a hotel, and again, combined with the adjacent property owner really makes a big difference.
And the restrictions on this land, I know as we try to build out this area with Cubs Stadium, could that piece of land not be used for something like entertainment, whether it's restaurants, bars, something else, or is it limited for some other reason that it couldn't?
No, I think the, there's planned 16,000 square feet of retail in with the hotel itself. The Cubs do have restrictions they'd like to see on the development. They don't want someone else selling Cubs merchandise when they're selling it right down the street, those type of efforts that have to be factored in as well. But I think all of that, whether entertainment's applicable or not, is really up to the property owner.
We've been hoping for everything you just said. That's what, that was the original plan, is to hold this corner out, but it wasn't able to be done either by the Cubs or by Bob. I think Bob figured out how to do it, Mr. Yoush figured out how to do it, combining it with the property he already controls. Without the combination of the two, it would be very difficult. You couldn't do this kind of development.
That's correct.
And we've, and there, no one's been able to do a restaurant, and what makes doing a restaurant now difficult is there's no onsite parking.
Yeah, I just don't, you know, as we, this is one of our major development areas with the Cubs Stadium, again, the square, the 1.35 million, when is the, when's the groundbreaking on that in the next few months, I'm assuming?
You still have a development agreement to, that we presented to you, hopefully in the next few months, to get that approved as well. The MOU has been approved, and we have to bring back a development agreement that lays out all the details.
Is there a rush to sell this property for any reason? We can't wait until the 1.35 million-square-foot complex breaks ground?
I think a lot of this is led by market demand, which is available, you know, when you look at available money, you know, one of the things the developer has said, he's got access to capital to actually go build today. That might not be here in a couple of months either.
Yeah, I would say, compare this to the union deal. The union deal is, after meeting with them, they, they don't have tenants, they don't have, I mean, they hope to, but they don't, whereas this property has identified brand and is approval from the hotels, I understand it, with financing in place.
Franchise agreements there.
I don't have anything else.
Mayor. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
You know, Bill, thank you, and Mr. Brady. I haven't wrestled with this because I think that, as it's been explained, that no other developer can come in and build on that ground because there's no onsite parking. So, to me, that's quite simple. The best marriage in this is the Sheridan ownership builds over here on the parcel. They have the parking there, and they can, they can do their retail, and again, the hotel rooms, we get the bed tax. I don't, I don't have an issue with it. I know we're selling it a little under that, the appraised value, but at the end of the day, you know, we get it back on the tax rolls, utilities, and the many things that we, we have. I, yeah, I guess we could wait, but I don't see any reason to do that if we have a buyer ready to go and build something that will just benefit the Cubs. They're, they can't even, there's not enough rooms in that area during spring training, let alone some of the other activities that go on there, convention and marketing. So, I just see it's a win situation that we move forward with this, and we get this property back, again, and the tax roll developed, and have the business owners, you know, we got to keep our business owners happy, and here's some available land for them, so I support it. Thank you.
And I understand the question that Jeremy's raising, is if we wait for the union to develop, won't that have the effect of... And I, I understand the question that Jeremy's raising, is if we wait for the union to develop, won't that have the effect of raising the appraised value of this property? But I think that, that really, that doesn't address the two, the problems with the property, which is that when you don't have any onsite property or parking, it's not developable, unless it's combined with the other adjacent property, and the fact that we've decided the hotel use is the highest and best use. Right now, the bed tax alone on this new hotel property will be three, you know, $193,000 a year. That's more than three times the amount of the $60,000 that we're discounting the property to get it into the hands of somebody that can develop it.
Well, and Mayor, I think to your point, I think it's going to help the union with the idea there's more hotel rooms closer to their office space, is what they've indicated too. So that leverages them to be able to get tenants in there.
It's just a remnant piece that's left over that cannot, if it had marketable value, it would have happened years ago.
Correct.
So for those reasons, I, I join with Mr. Freeman in, in saying this is a good deal. But we'll talk about it more upstairs. Any other discussion on 5E, gentlemen? Okay, thank you very much. Let's now go to the agenda for this meeting. First item is item two, that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on the auction of city-owned property on the northwest corner of Thomas and Rucker roads. Pleased to have Christine Zalanka and Beth Union with us.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. I know you're running short on time, so we're going to go through this pretty quickly. Basically, we're here today to request counsel direction to move forward with a land auction of the property, approximately 32 acres at the northwest corner of Thomas and Rucker. That's approximately a third of a mile north of the 202. To the north of that site is Namo Tally. That's a pretty heavy industrial user up there that does ballistics work. The current appraised value of the property is approximately 15.6 million. And Star Valley Road goes through the northern third of the property to a lift station that's owned and operated by the City of Mesa. Mesa acquired the property in 1998 with the intent of using it for future open space needs and public use. That's how it's currently designated in the general plan. In 1998, general obligation bonds were used to purchase the property, so there's basically a restriction on the use of the first $4 million that that has to be used for public purposes.
Not the first.
I'm sorry, what?
Not the first 4 million, this is just 4 million.
This is just a, a quick map showing the location, again, just north of Thomas Road to the west of Rucker. On the east side of Rucker is Red Mountain Ranch. Again, to the north is industrial use. There's industrial use to the west of the property, and then the land is vacant south of Thomas there. This is the zoning map of the area. Again, this is currently zoned for public use or a park. We have had interest from residential developers in that area, so the cities feel on the future use would be restricted to residential. However, we would look to the potential purchaser of the property to come forward with a specific proposal as to the density, the intensity, and the development pattern of the proposal. Wanted to stress that this will be a very open and public process. We're asking for council approval to proceed just with the land auction tonight. Council will have final approval of any purchase price that is negotiated. If the developer comes in and wants to do a minor general plan amendment and a rezoning to utilize it for residential, it would go through the normal public review process. That means it would go through extensive public involvement, public outreach, the planning and zoning board, and then ultimately would come back to council for final approval. Our proposed timeline on this is that the city's website would be posted, and the site will be posted, notifying the public of the proposed land auction. It would be advertised in the paper of general circulation, January 18th through 21st. February 4th, we'd have a pre-auction conference to ask any developers that might be interested, if they have any questions on the use or the process. February 19th would be the deadline for staff to receive questions, with our answer then required by February 21st. The proposed date of the auction is March 7th, and then March 11th would tentatively be opening escrow, and then it would be to be determined as to the minor general plan amendment and the rezoning of the property coming back to council. Our proposed process is the bid entrance fee would be $250,000. Just for your information, we pretty much followed the process that the town of Gilbert recently used when they did a, a land auction, and that follows along the processes that are used by state land. The bidding would be at $50,000 increments, and the successful purchaser, successful offerer would have to come in by March 11th with a cashier's check for 5% of their proposed offer. The entitlement process, that being the proposed development, the rezoning could start when the property is in escrow. We would anticipate that escrow would not close until the developer has their final entitlements. Again, as already stated, there would be extensive public involvement and extensive opportunities for the public to comment on any proposed development. And then, obviously, the, the property would not close escrow until after council has final approval. So that's a very quick, high-level presentation. All we're asking for today is just an approval to move forward with the land auction, and then we'll be back with the, the results of the proposals.
Thank you, Christine. Mr. Freeman, I'm sorry, Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Christine. Now, these were purchased up with general obligation bonds as opposed to park bonds. Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, before you go down that path, so back in 1998, general obligation bonds included in the same authorization, open space, streets, and utilities. They didn't separate it out back then. But there was a dozen, inside of that was a listing, so there's not separate bonds like we do today.
Right, right.
But it did say specifically, mentioned as a list of items, it mentioned parks and open space.
Okay, okay, because I think people from that area think that we were going to develop a park. If we were to develop a park, what would the cost of that be?
Well, that would vary a lot, Councilmember Luna. It would vary a lot depending on how we program the space. I can give you some examples of, like, if you look at Riverview, 25 acres built when the economy was very low in value. You know, we have a lake and a lot of amenities, and we had some, some economies of scale with building it with the stadium. I think that was on the order of 20 million for that, that park at 25 acres. If you look at Signal Butte that we have on the, if you look at the three projects we have on Signal Butte, that's around 10 million, but that's a passive park. But you can see there's a difference in the scale, but I think within the capital program, at one point, we had 30 or 31 million set aside if we were to do a park on this site. So I think for the original plans that were to go on this site, it was around 30 million.
What, what are we going to do with money, if we do move in that direction and say?
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, what, I think the idea would be, as was being alluded to, once we get to go through the auction, we come back with the value. We would then suggest to the council, as we did in the presentation, that the equivalent, and even though the bonds, we believe the bonds are pretty much paid off, because they've been outstanding for 20 years now, right? So the bonds have been paid out. But, and we haven't, we purchased the land, but we didn't develop the park. And there's probably been three or four park bond programs since then, and this project has never risen to the top of, of any of the list of priorities. But I think we would suggest to the council, and let's not spend it all right now, but we would come back and suggest that 4 million, the original 4 million of the acquisition price, we would put that back into city parks. And so we just try to, we could come back with, you know, before we, let's have the auction, then we could come back and council could direct us to come up with a suggested list of needs for parks, $4 million, whether it's in one area or others. I mean, I, I know there's a variety of other interests in this area, so that's certainly something we could do. But I think we would all agree that of that proceeds, about 4 million of that, or whatever that number was close to the acquisition, would be, that we would recommend to the council consider putting that into parks.
Well, I know there's a lot of interest around the development community to develop additional homes in that area, so I'm going to go ahead and support this plan. I think it's a good plan. It's a, it's an open plan. It's open for a public comment, and we're not going to do anything until it goes through the process that we all go through in terms of going through planning and zoning before we move on. So I, I'm going to go ahead and support this. It's the bid process.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. We do have a blue card from the public to speak on this, so why don't we go ahead and invite?
One question before.
Oh, sure.
Why are we selling the land? Like, what's the purpose, this specific piece of land?
Well, Mayor, Councilman Whitaker, I would say, we've been in discussions with a variety of different development in this area about doing land swaps for this property, for a variety of different reasons, those didn't come through. And then just kind of looking at this property, recognizing it, we've held it for 20 years. Yeah, 20 years, and the city's owned it, and it has not been available for public, it's, it's gated off. It uses, it's used for a lift station, so it's a very expensive piece of property for a lift station. And so we just don't see the.
My apologies, Chris, what'd you say, a lift station?
A lift station. Sewer lift station.
A wastewater lift station.
Heavy duty sump pump. So again, we kind of look at, here's an asset of the city that's nonproductive, it's not being used, it's not available to the public for use. It's gated off, so the thought is, because, and as was expressed, actually, in the last six, seven, eight months, we had a variety of different developments. Developers come to us and ask us about selling the land, and so that's why we're here.
Councilmember Whitaker, just if you look on this map, this road right here is Star Valley Road. It's gated off over here on Rucker, only to be accessed by the City of Mesa. And the lift station is actually, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with the mouse here, is at the end of that road. It's a significant lift station that's just kind of out there by itself right now, but is part, is an integral part of serving that area with sewer.
Okay. I think so, as we start to unload land, I think the last time I checked, we own like roughly $440 million of land on our balance sheet from the last CAFR that I looked at. Is this the beginning of us trying to liquidate land across the board in the city?
No, as I mentioned, 20 years, no park, last six months, several developers have come and asked about the property.
And I think the whole idea is there's, the development community has really, really been interested in buying the land. So this is an opportunity to go through a sealed bid process and, and see what comes out.
But actually, just to clarify that, it'll be.
Open bid, I'm sorry. It's an auction, I'm sorry, it's an auction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman.
You don't have to be sorry, but.
That's okay. I didn't mean to arrest anyone.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note, you know, our state land department has been selling land, and, and the auctions that they have held has generated, it was in the paper like 400 and something million dollars over the past year, and it's been land crazy. These developers are seeking land to build these developments on. And here we hold some acreage that, again, is not in the tax rolls, I believe. Is that correct?
No.
And, you know, there's no services out there. We accept a sump pump, a heavy-duty one. And at the end of the day, you know, put it up for auction, because they were showing these auctions, they were exceeding far above the appraised price on this property, on any property in the state. So I'm excited about this open bid process, and hopefully, let's, let's get this land off so we can pay down some of our debt service or defeat something out there that's on our, on our books, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Other comments before we invite Mr. Farnsworth up? Thank you, ladies. Mr. Farnsworth, welcome. Looking forward to hearing from you. We have three minutes.
Just so all of you know, this is my neighborhood. I have lived there since the day the city bought this property. When I heard that there was an ongoing discussion in relation to the possibility first of trading this land for the southwest corner of Thomas and Rucker, I began asking for information from city staff, which has been like pulling hen's teeth. I've gotten very little of the information that I have requested. Some of the unanswered questions and discrepancies that I want to point out to you tonight, and I can't give you all of them. There were signs posted on the property 20 years ago designating that this was a Mesa District Park to be. Those signs have disappeared miraculously, and they're no longer present to remind the citizens up there that that was their parkland. Meetings have been taking place with city officials and with elected officers since at least a year ago. Yet when I asked for notes pertaining to those meetings, none could be produced. Yet we have enough information now to bring this to the council for a vote for consideration. I find that astounding. In regards to the appraisals for the property, I asked for those, and I received one independent for the property. It's not 15.6 as was presented to us tonight, $25.5 million. Not 15.6. There's nearly a $10 million difference in those appraisals and what the city staff presented to you tonight. I have an email dated February 9th of 2001. At least 15 city employees were copied in that email. I want to quote what's that email said. "The 132-acre parcel that lies to the north was purchased with park bonds in 1998 to create a district park, which we hope to develop when the funds become available. This has been the city's intentions since the land was acquired. In fact, because the land was purchased with park bonds, it can only be used for park and recreation and open spaces." Part of the same email. "Again, we hope to develop the parcel into a park when the funds become available. That's why the site has signs on it that say 'Future Park Site.'" Now, just to close, I have a lot more to say, but I hope you'll listen. The mayor and I don't agree on a lot of things, but one thing we do or did agree on was in 1998, when he was a member of this council, as a councilman said. "This is one of the last pieces of pristine desert landscape that includes washes and large saguaro cactus left in Mesa. So we need to preserve it in a way that the community is going to enjoy." Mayor Brown at the time said this. He supports preserving most of it as a public open space. Well, I'm a resident of that area and have been for 23 years, and we've anticipated the time that that might be a park for what you'd like to talk about is an enhanced City of Mesa and public opportunities which elevate our livability space. I'm asking the council to table this item until a full discovery of the facts can be obtained and the citizens be willing to support such a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Interesting question. Was there an appraisal for $25.5 million? Can we clarify that, please?
Real estate is here. I was looking through the file today. The appraisal that I found was for the 15.6 million for approximately 32 acres.
Yeah, what's the date on the appraisal?
That was. November of 2000?
I don't, I'm sorry, Mayor and Council, I don't have that specific. Yes, yes. In the last six months.
So was there ever an appraisal done that, that valued it at $25.5 million?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. This is off the consent agenda, so I'll, I'll save my comments for upstairs, but. Oh, I'm sorry. This is not going upstairs. Thank you. Well, I, I support moving forward on this. I do have a long history with this property. I was on our council back in 1998 when we made the decision to acquire this property. It, it's very beautiful desert, rolling hills and washes and saguaro, and, and I wouldn't describe it any differently today than I did in 1998. For all of those reasons, it's very valuable property for custom home site development. This is not the type of property that any developer is going to come in and blade and, and put up production houses on. It's, it's going to be done with design, development envelopes, and there's going to be a lot of very Los Sendes-esque, I would think, is how this, you're going to see this develop. So the, the beauty of this desert is going to be preserved, I anticipate. And we'll go through all of these discussions during, all of the meetings that we're going to have during the entitlement process going forward as to how to preserve the beauty of this desert and to maintain the open space that's there. And, and I am very optimistic that we're going to be able to do that. If we're not, then. not, then, then this deal might never come to pass. But I do think that, given that 20-plus years have gone by, and it, it's not, it's not likely that we're ever gonna develop this as a park. Frankly, if it was, it would be a desert preserve-type park, and, and this property is located a couple of miles away from the Salt River Pima Miracle Canyon community, which is a lot of open space, the National Park, Tonno National Park, where people can enjoy a lot of open space. If it were developed as a park, it would be something, a, a mountain park preserve, very similar to Usary Park, which is just another couple of miles down, down the, the road as well. So, the, so that box has been checked two or three times in terms of the need for some sort of desert preserve park in this neighborhood. So, I think the, the, the fact that this is very valuable property that, and we can, the entire city can benefit from the value of this property, we can still preserve the beauty of the desert. We can, I, I retain the commitment to using 4 million dollars of this, we, we did make a commitment, I think, to the voters when they voted to approve these bonds, and we said part of this money is gonna be spent on open space. I would love to see us take that 4 million dollars with a commitment to promoting access to open space and, and fostering more community involvement in the open space throughout our community. So, so that's gonna be a priority of mine going forward as well from the, and we'll see what the proceeds from the sale are. But I think it, letting this valuable asset sit unused is, in my mind, not responsible at this point. So, this is to hear presentation and provide direction on the auction. I'm expressing support for going forward with the, with the auction. Do we need a motion on this, Mr. Smith? We're just trying to take the pulse of the council. Yeah, so, I've heard, I've heard Mr. Luna and I express support. Council, any other opinions you'd like to express? Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda for this meeting is item three, that's to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, any you'd like to share with us? Okay, if not, then, Mr. Brady, what's our schedule of future meetings?
Reminder, we will not have a study session on this, on Thursday, January 10th. Our next study session will probably be January 17th or 24th, and we'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
And then, just a reminder, we have, the reason we're not having a study session is we have this soaring-end ceremonies on Thursday for our newly-elected council members. Program begins at 6:00 PM at the Piper Theater with a reception following in the IKEA Theater at the Mesa Arts Center. And we're also have an opportunity to thank Mr. Glover for his years of service. We're doing that tomorrow evening, so, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Yes, Mr. Thompson?
On that fact, this is Mr. Glover's last study session with us. I've been a co-author in crime, I guess, for four years now, and I'm gonna miss his tutelage, his mentorship, and his friendship. I've sat next to him for the past four years, and your friendship's gonna be greatly missed here. Thank you for all you've done for, for us as a council and for staff and for the City of Mesa.
I, I appreciate that, and I, I, I'm gonna express a similar sentiment upstairs in our formal council meeting. But hopefully, you'll get the feeling that we appreciate you, Chris. We really, thank you. I think, so we had a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.